Lois, can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Certification has been advertised according to Sunshine Law.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Venero.
Here.
Mr. Zungry.
Here.
Mrs. Inogorado.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy. Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shore.
Here.
Mr. Medikini.
Here.
Mr. Covielo. Mr. Anella. Mr. Haritz.
Here.
Mrs. Tebeto.
Here.
And Mr. Dielrath.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the amendment for the October 9, 2014?
Hello?
Second.
Lois, call roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Zungry.
Yes.
Mrs. Inogorado.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore. Mr. Medikini.
Yes.
Correspondence payments of those. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Other business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? I have small business in, um, in reference to the Claramas construction and recent incident with the crane. I'd like to know exactly when this planning board, when it came before us, actually.
That was his only word on the front, right?
It did.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Um, I'd like to know really because it seems like this section, the Claramas section in town seems to be somewhat neglected because there was four water problems within the last two years. And quite frankly, I'm tired of being without water. So, I mean, in four years, I'm curious to find out, was there an engineer on site? Was there a project manager on site? And then I heard rumors that they were told not to move the crane in a certain area and they did anyway.
That's correct.
That's correct. Will we be citing them?
We will be fact charging them for everything. They've already accepted, uh, they've already come to you up with something for the fact charges.
Well, I mean, I think we should really, really, um, put down that fairly hard due to the fact that your parking garage collapsed at one point and now we have business in it. So, I, whatever we do, why we stress we do it to the max.
Whatever that, I, the parking garage is gone, so the crane should be gone by now.
I, um, I have a question to back that up. Originally, the parking garage came before planning in its construction and its approval, correct? Correct.
Correct, the first one, when it collapsed.
Yes. But the first one as it was proposed to us as a plan with the levels, correct. So, therefore, instead of when they went for this expansion, why didn't they come back to the planning board? Why did they go some?
Just explain, they went to zoning board.
Yeah, but why?
Because it's conditionally used, you understand? It's conditionally used. If they don't make the condition, they go from the zoning board. Of course, it was, it was in conjunction with the expand, their building in a form, there's a, there's a building going in, it's only one bed, uh, probably.
Okay.
So, that, that, that's true. So, the reason it's arched that came here is they needed to add parking to the site. So, parking was part of the application for the, the additional improvement.
But it, it, but the parking had to do with buildings that originally came in front of us?
Right, they needed additional parking because of the square footage that they're putting on for the hospital, so they added all the parking. That's as far as the parking bed can go. It's, it's not established.
I understand. And perhaps, uh, counselor will refresh me when you have the time as to why this went to the other board, not that I have a objection. I understand, but Rose.
The condition leads up to the zone.
I know, but Rose is great at putting it into simple terms that I can understand.
I need to follow that too.
Thanks.
We can still, we'll try more so.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks, thanks, Rick.
Uh, resolutions, Lois, you got any resolutions?
No, we don't.
Okay. Under new business, the mayor and municipal council would like the planning board to review an ordinance amending Chapter 23, the zoning ordinance of the township of Belleville establishing minimum parking spaces exception. Um, Tom, you want to just?
Yeah, there's a, the, the, there's, there's a situation throughout the township where, uh, because of the way the zoning was years ago, they had built, they built the garages lower than the, uh, than the street level. And that was because when the ordinance was written, you could only go to, uh, so, so high and if you had the garage above the street level, it would require the barriers. So, so people can get away, they didn't want to apply for the barriers and just buried the garage. And it is a flooding problem for a lot of people. I think Frederick Street's one, uh, there's another one, there's another person down at Portland Street. So, the easiest solution for some of these people is to fill in their, they block off the garage door and fill in their driveways. The problem becomes is that the ordinance is written that you have to have two parking spaces and one of them has to be in a garage for, for one or two family house. So, in order to give these people relief, uh, if they're only going to be able to have one car parked now in the driveway, that's why we've come up with this ordinance.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Shannon?
I think I can answer. Uh, I know on Geraldo Street, um, for years, there's been flooding problems. And I'm just curious, I mean, whether they could fill up the hole or whatever that they're going to do. I still don't think the problem is going to be solved in that area. It might help a little.
No, no, this, this isn't meant the, I, I know this, this.
That's why I think we should fix the problem?
No, but this is a problem where it's flooding the individual house value.
They want the.
So, this, this is, this is, this is no cause to tell, to tell that these people are doing this on their own because it just had enough here.
They're fed up, exactly.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the location. It's on my street and the people, I think it's three or four times, have their basement on three feet of water.
Yeah.
When it rains, the water comes down the curb line, it goes over the curb, floods out their basement, the boiler, the hot water heater. They're really nice people. They're, they're at the wood's end and, uh, I think when we re, uh, did the master plan reevaluation, we allowed for higher buildings so that people can put parking at street level.
The ordinance is done, the ordinance is revised.
So, moving forward, you know, when people build a house, the parking won't be underneath like that. It, it was really the.
It's common sense.
Yeah. The, the driveways were such a steep angle, I don't know if anybody could have got the cars in anyway. So, moving forward, the master plan allows them to go a little higher, put the parking at street level and build your two stories over it. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in public? If not, someone like to make a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll go with it.
Well, second.
Well, you're recommending that the council approve this ordinance, that's what you're basically.
I don't want to add any control or take it out, depends whether it is, I'm sending it to council.
So, we've recommended we're going to send this to council.
Unless you want to change something on it or delete it or anything, stuff you got.
No, I think so.
I mean, it's like a clarification of, of the fact, as we said, start, uh, start to be basement space and kind of be livable space to the homeowner. I'm not saying.
Mr. Lorenzo, could you answer?
I mean, they're, you know.
Well, yeah, they're just saying that they don't want any dwelling units, another dwelling unit there and, uh, they just say it has to be used as a, as a basement space.
So, whatever people normally use their basement for, that would.
Recreation or whatever, no, no dwellings.
Okay, that's all, yeah. So, can we get a second?
Yes.
Lois, would you call the roll?
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Zungry.
Yes.
Mrs. Inogorado.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Yes.
Mr. Medikini.
Yes.
Application before the board, we have the continuation of the Northeast redevelopment plan comprised of blocks nine, one, oh, one, blocks nine, ten, and fourteen, block nine, one, oh, three, block one, block one, zero, zero, two, block one, and a portion of block nine, zero, zero, two, block one. We had closed the public portion of, of the redevelopment plan at the last meeting, so right now, any of the board members have any further questions they'd like to ask at this time? Arlene?
I need a clarification. Is the parking, if you remember, last meeting I raised it, is the parking, um, one bedroom? I believe that was my concern. If there was more than one bedroom.
One space per bedroom?
Would there be a parking space for a bedroom?
Chris, have you referred that to Mr. Madden?
My understanding, I think, um, the, the property owners slash potential redevelopers are here. My understanding that they have agreed to, uh, to park these spaces for a year.
For bedrooms?
For bedrooms. Oh, well, no, uh, for units.
Which means?
Which means one per bedroom.
Oh, all right, all right.
Right, but overall two. Otherwise, overall two, because they're.
Because you go, you have two bedrooms, is that, you might reckon there will not be any three bedrooms?
Yes, there will be.
There will be three bedrooms or there will?
Well, here's another thing that the, uh, the developer, the property owner has proper. Rather than have what we have as an average of two units per acre.
Two bedroom.
Two, two bedroom units. Uh, maybe it's better, maybe it's better if he explains what he thinks is a better solution, uh, with Mr. Bishop.
Over here.
Why don't you explain what you're proposing as a, as a, as a better solution than an average of two?
Did he just swear me in?
I already was, but.
One sec, just before Mr. Bishop starts. The only thing I want to make clear is this is not an application for the, this is a plan. And this is just Mr. Bishop's suggestion with regard to that plan.
Right.
Thank you.
But it would answer what I, I'm making.
I understand, I just want to make sure everybody understood.
All right, I said.
Uh, Mr. Bishop, did you sort of fill out your report to the government?
I did.
Say your name again.
Richard Bishop. What I had said to John was that when, when we first met, we thought the easiest thing was to just say, well, we'll go with an average of two bedrooms per unit. And that's become an issue with school and whatnot. So, I think you have a document that Mr. Steck had prepared in October that outlined what we thought the, uh, the actual bedroom mix would be. And I came up with an average of about 1.3 bedrooms per unit. If we'll have studios, we'll have one bedrooms, we'll have two bedrooms. The majority of the units will be one bedrooms and studios. So, I had said to John that, uh, we, we've agreed to go with a lower average number of bedrooms per unit. We could live with 1.75 as an average, you know, which would have an impact on the number of school age kids. And, uh, you know, we, we'd agree to that. We thought, just saying, two, two bedrooms on average made it simple for everybody, but it became a big issue thinking that they're all going to be two bedrooms. But, uh, I think that 75% of them will be one bedroom.
But what about the parking?
Uh, the parking, uh, I think Tony had explained to you that we're already going to be over parking, uh, building more parking spaces than we need. So, we agreed to do one parking space per every bedroom. So, if that meant we were going with 1.75 bedrooms and we have a thousand units, you could have at least 1,750 parking spaces as opposed to what Mr. Madden's plan initially said, one bedroom, one parking space per apartment. Now, we'll go with one parking space for every bedroom, which would, because I think Patty or Arlene had said, well, you, everybody knows if you have a two or a three bedroom, that means there's a husband, a wife, and you're going to have two cars. So, so we're fine with, uh, with that kind of a condition if you wanted to, you know, make that a, an amendment or whatever.
All right, well, that's what, I, that's.
Does that explain it?
That, that.
Does that explain it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I've got one other. I, Mr. Steck said something on, uh, in his statement, I think it was on, it, it says, it says, why don't you kind of, it, it, there's a concern about the first four acres and then relate it to density.
Right, I can explain.
And then, and then I, we have farther paperwork to explain it. And just for myself, is that four acres included?
Not, not included in the calculation of density and floor area. They are saying, they are, Lois, that is land that is in the flood area and therefore, uh, we excluded it. And they would like to have it included in the density calculations and in the FAR calculations. And I think that's something that, I mean, this board could, would make a, take a position on it, or the council, or it could be subject to redevelopment agreement. But my thinking is that this area, uh, my understanding is if it floods, it really aren't, they're not going to put any structures in it. The state has, uh, no, no net fill requirement in flood areas. So, therefore, I don't see how you could build an area under the state rules. So, that's why we exclude it, at least. So, that, that. Some, some FAR requirements do include the total land area, but I thought it's limited, excluded.
What's F A R?
Floor area, in other words, the amount of floor area, the amount, literally the amount of development you could have on the property. Always, floor area is, in this case, 50 stories of floors, you know. So, I'm not, they're not getting any credit that could be used to increase the density by having that four, four acres.
Even though this is a concept plan, it is 50, I thought that there was, there was some, like, you know, something less, they weren't going to 50.
Fifty stories.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
We're, we're being asked to approve this, this, uh, these three options.
Right.
Right? As a package.
Not approved, not approved.
Or sent to council.
Sent to council with your, with your comments, right.
And I recall Mr. Reagan saying that he was not interested in anything less than 50 stories on Washington Avenue. This package is 20 stories.
That's correct, right.
Is he not interested in this package?
I can't answer that.
I need to know because there, there, we're, we're not approving, we're sending to the council 50 stories on Washington Avenue. He made it pretty clear that without 50 stories, he wasn't interested in the development.
Well, I think that's a question that you have to pose and you need an answer.
I, I attend on, because that's a starting point for us, because there are some limitations that the board wants to put on this.
Right. That's, but just to be clear, that's not what the plan says. So, in other words, if you, you, in other words, if, in the, first of all, the thing we got, you have to decide is consistency with, with the, with the plan. That's the number one thing you got to do tonight. Second thing is your comments, your conditions. Uh, and if you want to ask them questions about, uh, whether or not option three is a no-go, uh, that certainly, you're right. I can't answer that question. I can say, this is the plan I prepared.
Right.
And.
Part of the reason why I'm, it's 20 stories.
20 stories, right. I'm just referring back to a comment that Mr. Reagan made, saying that he wasn't interested in the development that did include 50-story buildings on Washington Avenue.
If I could.
Yeah.
Mr. Conti's question, uh, is based on a comment that Mr. Reagan made. Mr. Reagan has a partner and he's already spoken tonight. If you would like, I can recall Mr. Bishop and he can respond to your question. It seems like you're interested in having that term, is that okay? Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Fine.
Bishop, would you please respond to Mr. Conti's question with regard to number of units on the top of what?
I don't recall Tony saying it was a deal breaker, it wasn't 50 stories, but we've had conversations with Mr. Madden since the meeting and, uh, we'd agreed to, you know, 375 feet along Washington Avenue, which is a sizable reduction in, uh, in what we were envisioning there. Uh, what I think Tony had explained was that Washington Avenue is where we really feel that we've got to put our best foot forward. We understand what Mr. Madden's, uh, uh, outlined for the lower 24 acres. Uh, but, uh, you know, development is, is really situated, or centers around what we do on Washington Avenue. That's where we'll have our retail space, that's where we'll have our train platform, that's where we'll have all the other things. And, uh, so, uh, that's important to have, uh, some synergy there.
But that still is a departure from this plan.
Right. Well, Mr. Madden suggested that there'd be 20, he's recommending 20 stories or 275. And so, we, we said, okay, we'll go with 375. I mean, it's still your call and, you know, we still would have to discuss.
I can, I just, I say, that's just before, you know.
I did want to make it clear, I did have a conversation with him. For what I've asked him, in other words, I've asked him to present, uh, substantially more data. But I don't really understand the, what, what's going to, what the difference in height is. What, one of the things that they told me is that they want to put a lot more non-residential in this, this Washington Avenue phase. Remember, I'm only requiring something like 80,000 square feet of non-residential space in the first phase. They're proposing a lot more. How much more? I've asked him to document, I've asked him to know, uh, for example, uh, what are the floor ceiling heights? What do the floor plates look like? So, before I can say, uh, what this additional height means in terms of, you know, in other words, he's saying that he could do 20 stories, but he wants to have a little more, which makes, which, which probably makes sense. If you're going to have restaurants and, and offices, you're not going to have residential ceiling heights. So, that's where we're at now. So, I'm not, I'm not endorsing what he says, nor am I saying that it's a non-starter.
And again, we're not saying, my client's not saying that he's not going to do it if he doesn't get 50 stories on Washington Avenue. He's expressing his concern about the importance of starting the project on Washington Avenue and being able to get, put his best foot forward. And that's why they have a particular opinion. Now, Mr. Bishop has indicated they would be satisfied, let's use that phraseology, if the board were to see fit to increase the height to.
375.
375 on Washington Avenue as opposed to the 20 stories that are there now. But again, we understand that this is the board's recommendation to the governing body. And then eventually, should this go forward and we be appointed to developer and a development agreement be entered into, we'll be back before this board with specificity. But for our input, for my client's input, we are interested in the 375 along Washington Avenue again because of the importance they feel about that location, both as to commercial space and residential space.
Can I answer Mr. Shore's question?
Certainly.
Uh, Mrs. Shore asked a question about the, uh, the four acres on the lower part. It's actually eight acres. And it's below the approximate flood line. And in development, that's called, you see what they call wet lots all the time, where somebody might have a lot that's 40 by 80 and half of it's in wetlands. Well, they can't build in that, but they're still allowed to use the square footage of the lot to develop their overall lot coverage percentages and all that. And on this particular property, when you approved Lowe's in 2007, you took the entire 23.7 acres and used all that acreage to figure out the calculations. We understand what Mr. Madden says, there's DEP and all sorts of regulations about what can be built in that area. And we're going to totally comply with that. We don't intend to have any structures in that area. But the square footage is very important to us in developing our FAR numbers, developing our density numbers. Because if you take eight acres out of the 24, you effectively took one-third of our property and what good is it for us? I mean, we bought it, now taking it away for us, we can't use it for anything. I mean, it's not even our property anymore. So, uh, that was just, uh, what Mr. Steck had tried to explain in his, uh, his testimony on the, at the first meeting.
Once again, when, when we approved this package, there, there's recommendations of, of units, how many units. And I understand that your original, uh, you know, plan was to go above the 4,500 units. So, in trying to get that eight acres to be considered, you want to be able to add floor space or potential units. How many units do you see building on this site? Do you have a number?
Well, the, the, the rendering that is included in Mr. Steck's plan, which is totally conceptual and would probably take, you know, 15 years to build, that shows like eight buildings with five or 600 units in each building. So, the, if you took the whole thing 15 years from now, it could be 6,000 units, you know, it could, it could be.
This is where I become a little confused, because we're, we're going to vote as a body to take Mr. Madden's report and refer it to the council. And it doesn't say anything about 6,000 units. We wanted it limited from 45 units in this report down to 4,000 units. I have a problem with the density. I do. I have a personal problem with the density. Where I came from, they called it the projects. When you put, listen, it could be, it could be high-end and I, I see the dream and I see that vision, I do. Mr. Reagan spoke about it. I wanted a unit there. There's also a reality, and I know it's a long-term project too, but you're going to put, I was telling, uh, the chairman, I drive on Boulevard East from Weehawke into Fort Lee, there's not that many 25-story buildings in the six-mile drive. I think it's a big deal what we're about to vote on, because I'm, I'm very agreeable and I am, and I'd love to see it developed and I do see part of that vision. And I would, I wouldn't maybe have as much of a problem with it if it was two towers and then some lower buildings. You're talking about 50-story towers in the back and 20, 30-story unit, uh, towers in the front and a, on a 20-acre parcel. It's a lot.
The rendering.
And in your, and in your thinking, you're going to 6,000 units. So, what are we approving here? I don't know even what we're approving. What are we approving? Your, your plan seems to be different than this plan. How far can we stray from this plan?
Mr. Conti, just so we understand, you're approving your plan, not our plan.
We don't have to consider what they want. I mean, we're considering Mr. Madden's recommendations.
But though, I just would like to respond to one thing, and that's the, and I tried to talk about this last month. That's the concept that this could be a project. You will never see something of this magnitude without it being something special. Because you'll never get the financing unless it's something special, beginning to end. This is a unique concept. My clients have a vision. I, I, they've convinced me of their vision. And they've obviously invested a lot in that vision. This is not somebody with just a dream without supporting it and buying property and having contracts with regard to the other properties. So, they have a vision and it's up to the board to see if you will give them the opportunity to try to fulfill their vision. But again, what they're looking for and what you decide, you know, that's what they would like to have. If you make a recommendation, hopefully, to the governing body, uh, the governing body has a subcommittee they appointed. Hopefully, they would meet with my clients and discuss it, but they may reduce what you send then or increase what you send then. But if there's any other questions, we'd like to try to answer them.
Just Mr. Conti, I think our recommendation would be for the plan from Mr. Madden. I mean, with all due respect, what they want to do, they can discuss that with the council. What, what we're going to vote on is Mr. Madden's plan as presented, and we have some conditions that we had to address, so.
Which, which one of the conditions was a limitation on the units, you know, right? When I hear 6,000 units. And we're looking to push in the other direction. I don't want to waste your time. And I'm not so sure that, like you said, it's up to the governing body.
This is the first step, a many-step process.
Well, the governing body is certainly going to take your recommendation into consideration. They're the ultimate decider on this. But the, what we're looking for is to allow as much flexibility as you're willing to allow to give my clients the chance to develop something special at this location. They have, uh, a tremendous vision with the local railroad stop, special-looking buildings, tremendous shopping, et cetera. Uh, so, it would be an absolutely phenomenal thing for Belleville, should their vision be able to be fulfilled, even to a great extent, not even to the fullest extent. So, we're looking for the opportunity to have a chance, and I'm repeating the words, to have a chance to fulfill this vision.
Yeah, answer Arlene's thing about the FAR too, because the FAR helps check what you're talking about. If we have an FAR which is floor area ratio, which is the multiple of the size of the lot, you can't do one and the other. You're doing a combination of, say it's a million square feet. Well, the residential part gets deducted from that and that's what you're left over with. Mr. Madden said, he's proposing 80,000 square feet on the front. Uh, most developers are, you've dragged them to the finish line and forced them to put in other things other than the units. We want to have this. We want to have office space. We want to have restaurants. We want to have other things like that. So, the FAR gives you that check. You know, down the road, we may have a, a, a client who wants an office building, you know? If they want an office building, well, you're going to get an office building that's going to have offices, but you're not going to have all those units. You might see that. Somebody may say. You might see that. Somebody may say, oh, boy, there's good living here. We want a five-story, a 10-story office building, we change our plan. We don't know what, I mean, it's just a vision right now. But those kind of things, that's why you don't want to have a restrictive FAR, you don't want to have, you don't want to take the eight acres away from that calculation. They'll still have a shot at us every time we come here for site plan for the next 15 years.
The other thing I just want to point out lastly, there will be, should this be approved, eventually, a developer point and a development agreement. That development agreement can cover a wide array of conditions, requirements, et cetera. And that's the way the governing body and this board would control what would go there despite what is set forth in the plan. We have to meet all of those conditions that you require in the development agreement.
I'd just like to make one additional comment. I really forgot or didn't think about Lowe's, even though I sat on years ago. But we did allow that land to be used. I don't think that that little land should be used, obviously, below for residential. But at the same time, it's part of the package that say that it can't be used for anything. When we did, we have a record that we allowed another commercial enterprise, which was Lowe's at the time, to calculate that land. So, I just want for the record to say that it's something, I don't see how that land could be totally excluded. Because in past practice, we did include it, in fact, for construction. And the other thing, the other comment I've got to make is that we shouldn't be, if this is what the comments that's being made about the flexibility of the plan, then we shouldn't just include residential. That there should be flexibility in allowing business to be in there if it presents itself. Is it? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it. All right, I'm done. Sorry.
Just so the board knows, with the Lowe's, the front portion of the property was, that was basically just store room management of that detention basis and it was a big green area.
Any other members, any questions?
The planning board had a subcommittee meet on three separate occasions and we came up with several recommendations for the northeast redevelopment plan. And they're as follows. That 10% of the units can only be three bedrooms. That the helipad not, that the helipad is not an accessory use. Any use which is not classified as permitted shall be considered a prohibited use. That they name a redeveloper as soon as possible. That the total number of dwelling units be limited to 4,000 units. That 35% the open space and that 55% the building area. So, in addition to Mr. Madden's northeast redevelopment plan, we have these following conditions as listed that we would like to make part of the plan.
I believe that we're saying two bedrooms and not three bedrooms. Even though it said three, we're limiting down to two.
We want to leave them semi.
Well, okay, but this way it puts a control on the number of potential students.
Only a maximum of 10%.
Okay. There's a few things that I would like included if the board feels necessary.
I guess, go ahead.
I'd like to include the fire training and any necessary equipment would be included in the future. I also would like to see that any type of funding for schools after, say, be a first priority as a bonus for, say, five years after their capacity and how it would affect us. Also, I would like to include in the kitty place. I think that the council should consider any ramifications and the possibility of problems arising in that street.
I thought we spelled out kitty place pretty clearly, you did, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
But they may change their plans and possibly.
They said no part of your plan would impact the build around or homeowners off in the kitty place.
Wasn't cutting off, they may have spelled that out, but the problem is, one of the plans, and I know it's on the lower end, there was no egress. There was no two ways in and out of that section. So, I'm thinking that if they do go down to a lower portion, we have to consider the ramifications of kitty place, which might be irrelevant, but.
I think that's most stuff that would be addressed in the site plan. You know, at this time, as far as the school, the fire, fire department, all that would be specifically spelled out in the developer's agreement. And I don't think, this is not the time to address those, but they would be, the developer's agreement, I'm told, would be, you know, hundreds and hundreds of pages. Everything would be clearly spelled out. And this is just a recommendation for this plan to move forward to the council. So, at this time, I think those specific items would not be included in this.
Okay, but you will include the fire and schools as a priority?
Well, there's thresholds in the plan that they have to meet to the Board of Education for impact on the school system. That's clearly going to be spelled out.
It's not bonus?
In order to get the density, in order to get the density, we're going to have to prove the impact of the schools. That's part of the plan.
Then, what you're saying is that the training and the necessary equipment would not be included?
Not at this time. We're supposed to develop a fire department, they said there would be training and some special equipment that they would need. And that would all be spelled out in the redevelopers agreement. This is just a basic redevelopment plan for this. All the specific details will be spelled out in detail in the redevelopers agreement.
And that would be in the contract, I grant that. I'm not too happy about that, but I would like to see. Also, there was one more thing about the abatement, we discussed that. And I know that's up to the council too, so.
What abatement is that?
The pilot of a tax abatement?
That's not part of, that's not part of this redevelopment plan. I guess the council would have to bring out a, that's not a decision.
Is that legally? On our holding space?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, what we're doing, just for clarification for the public, I just would like to, have you explain what exactly what we're doing, that we're saying we're planning, we're doing, and what we expect. I would like the public to be aware that we're only doing a recommendation and that it's not our decision because there's been many, you know, things out there in the public, so if you could show me.
Absolutely. Just to reiterate, the job of this board is to review and decide if they would like to make this certain recommendation for development to the actual governing body. And if they do, they can make this recommendation with certain conditions. They can decide if they not want to make the recommendation, but it's not the function or the job of this particular board to approve any particular plan, any particular vision, any particular specifics that have been brought before us throughout this entire application. So, just to make it clear, should this board decide after reviewing all of the documentation, listening to all of the testimony and the explanations, if they should decide that it is in the best interest of Belleville to actually recommend this plan with conditions that they feel is appropriate and they, you know, can do so legally speaking, that is the function of this particular board. And that is the limit of their function. Then it will go before the governing body and they will make actual determinations. A lot of the questions that have been brought up and asked here would be more appropriately brought up before the governing body as their legal function, just to clarify that. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, are you going to make these attachments to the plan?
Yeah, that's, yes, I just said that our recommendation for the northeast redevelopment plan would include the following seven items that I had just read out.
I just thought that if we're making, so I'm clear, I understand we're making these recommendations. Would it be move us to make the recommendations for the school and for training purposes? What if the council don't ask that or include that?
Part of the redevelopment plan was specific criteria that had to be met in order to get the density. That they have to prove the impact the schoolchildren in the schools. And if there was an impact that created overcrowding, that they would have to have a plan. They would have to add classroom space, they would have to have a private school. That's spelled out in this plan. Education, there's environmental impacts, there's traffic studies.
You're very misleading when you say a private school because ultimately, when you're talking about a private school, it is not incumbent upon the town to have them go to a private school, it's a bill. It's only an option to be able to do that.
I, we feel it's needed or not, Mr. Lurado, she feels strongly about it?
Oh, I feel strongly too, Dad. If there's an impact on the school system, we don't want the town to vote for it. And that I thought was spelled out pretty clearly.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I do. But apparently, Mr. Lurado feels very strongly about it and maybe we can just put it out, but the council will be ejected, it's virtual. I don't want to be on the line here.
That's correct. I mean, you can, you can reiterate.
So, we can move things along?
It's not, because it's included in the plan.
And maybe you dodged it right, I got what you're saying, I understand that. But she feels very strongly about it.
Only because of past practices and certain things that happened through the years, that would be applicable.
Why do you just worry to have these specific, your seven specific recommendations? And then also, the board feels strong that, about the school funding.
Oh, I'm sure everyone feels strongly about it.
I think she wants that in there.
How would you like to word?
I can word it, I can word it in the sense that it's strongly suggestive that it's a consideration. Because at the end of the day, you know, you're not really making this recommendation. So, I can word it in that way.
So, I read out seven, seven items. So, we're going to add an eighth item pertaining to the school systems. And how would you like to have that word, so we can proceed?
Is there a particular way that you would like me to enumerate that for you?
If there's any additional, any impact on the school system from this project that creates more schoolchildren, that needs additional class space or overcrowding and more teachers?
Right.
Councils just to consider that aspect.
And that the fire training and any necessary equipment needed.
I think, I think that our, that our deputy director is right. It doesn't do any harm to.
Chief.
Chief, or, I'm sorry. But it's, but it's, Mark, it's been reviewed.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
But I think what he said is right. It doesn't do any, any harm to make that notation to the council and this would.
All right, so, we had these seven items. We had seven items that I had read out. We want to add two additional items. One of them being the impact of this project on the education system in our town. We want the town council to strongly consider that. And number nine would be fire. Any safety or training or equipment needed would be addressed before this project moves forward. Before they start building, do they have to address?
We'll be back for it, like you said, we'll be back for it. Any fire and safety requirements, we'll be back for it.
So, someone want to make a motion to recommend the northeast redevelopment plan with the conditions or with the recommendations that we just said to the council?
Mr. Pointe Boarder, if you may. Can the public space?
No, the public, the public.
But you allow the witnesses to give further testimony. You allow further testimony when you close at the last meeting. So, I think we have a right to.
They answered deliberations, deliberations from the council. We closed the public portion.
But you then allow the witnesses to give further testimony. So, I think we should be allowed to question the witnesses or the board to give further, as well. Why are we being denied the opportunity when they were given, the hearing wasn't over?
Do you have a specific question or do you have a comment?
Both.
Well, we closed the public comment. If you have a specific question.
You think all the discussion was over last week?
Yeah, we did reopen it. They answered, answered specific questions.
You allow the witnesses to get up again.
Has to be officially reopened or is not officially reopened?
We were requested to answer questions.
During a deliberation phase from specific questions from the board.
And he gave additional testimony, which was different than what he spoke at the last meeting.
You're allowed to speak, this is a courtesy right now. You're allowed to speak if we reopen. We didn't reopen and that's procedurally, legally correct.
So, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. That be recommended, that for consideration to the council.
Lower school room?
Mr. Vanyor.
Yes.
Mr. Zumbry.
Yes.
Mrs. Inargarado.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Yes.
Mr. Medikin.
Yes.
I thank the board for its time and attention. And I ask that if council could possibly send me a copy of that proposed resolution before it's finalized as for legal input with regard to, such as whether or not it was consistent with the master plan and that kind of thing.
I think the board also, one of the things that you have to do in that besides issue your conditions is to state how this plan, the force in the master plan, it's a deviate from it. Now, in terms of the Washington Avenue side, it is very consistent with zoning on that side. It's only mixed-use development. On the Main Street side of the Finkelstein property, that is, that's in the master plan and it's only for BF, which is industrial commercial. I will state that the master plan does discuss the fact that the valley is changing and the industry may not be as viable as it used to be and that some mixed-use might be considered in the future. So, but as Mr. Steck said, you have to make a, in other words, you really have to clearly say that BF is not consistent, what they're proposing is in the master plan, in the redevelopment plan is not consistent with the master plan. But the board nonetheless recommends it to be considered for mixed-use.
But wasn't that included in, wasn't that language included in this?
Well, you are being asked to make that statement. That's one of your primary functions when this is referred to you by the council. You have to, I mean, if you come up with, if you feel that it's not consistent in terms of, I'm talking broadly now, in other words, you may not agree with all the specifics of the plan, but broadly, is this a general direction that the board is comfortable with or not? That's something that I think you would add on to your resolution.
Yeah, I'll be specific about it in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Okay? We iterate, what is consistent and what isn't consistent and how.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
No further questions? Someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some?
Meeting is adjourned.